Just knock out another one related to windows. There's a guideline, a CH report, but just referencing flush windows. Again, no windows are proposed, so we do not need to use the allegations. So moving into section D, additional design criteria exceptions. The first one is related to doors. Under D1, doors shall be side hinged. We do not believe that relief is required here. There is no formal doors actually proposed. We have an entrance which is flanked by glass and will be opened except at night and it will be secured by a gate as was previously testified to. Under D2 is building articulation. The plan states, and this is on page 63, overly long buildings should be broken down to scale comparable to that of the buildings. No street wall should extend beyond 100 feet without a break. This can be accomplished by articulating the building in a plan or elevations. Inches may be enough. And it's our position that given the proposed design of the wood wall along both Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk, in the specific language that inches may be enough due to the articulation in that wood wall, we do not require relief from that provision. And maybe now is a good time to actually address the revised elevation for the boardwalk side of the facility. So...
The microphone came.
This is the revised rendering shared by Hendal Architects showing proposed change to the plan to further address any concerns about overly long, monotonous building walls. And so along the boardwalk elevation, we have created eight landscaped inset along the boardwalk. And each of these landscape incents is 1 feet by 9 inches deep and 7 feet by 4 inches wide. And each of these planted areas will be planted with the same grass that is actually going to be screening the transformer in the northwesterly corner of the property. So this is the calamogrossis call forcer feather reed. So the same is around the transformer.
Oh, I hear you.
And so there will be four of those plantings within each of the incents. We think this is going to be another nice way in addition to the variation in the wood fencing to bring up the plan particularly along the boardwalk elevation. And as Ms. Smith pointed out at the outset, we're not showing any benches or planters within the boardwalk in this area. Should City Council consider those elements to be added at a later date, that would, I think, further enhance the visual requirement in this area. So again, the intent here is really just to create more visual interest along the So when I raise that, again, just in reference to the discussion under D2 and the provision about not creating overly long street walls without a break. So both with respect to the design of the fence and then these new incents along the boardwalk side, we feel that we do not need relief from this provision of the plan on page 63. Okay, and then D3 is a guideline with respect to building frontages. And it sort of gives a hierarchy of preferred building frontage or base facades, one being gallery or arcade, two shop front with awning, three residential stoop, four fence and porch, five landscape front yard. And there's also some language about avoiding blank walls. And so obviously, these are not applicable, certainly reference to a gallery or a storefront in this instance, are not really applicable to the proposed beachfront or beach club use as it's not an active retail storefront. Nonetheless, we have articulated the front facade, both with the decorative fencing as well as the living wall, and then also addressed the boardwalk elevation with the incents within the fencing as well as the regular pattern of sort of ins and outs with the pattern of the wood fence. So we feel we've addressed this and do not require relief from this particular provision. Under D4 is wall finish. And there is, under page 65, a provision that walls shall be primarily smooth stucco or its visual equivalent. In this case, the wall finish was primarily wood with some stucco features. And I would point out elsewhere in the plan, there's actually some additional references to wood as being a preferred building material. So it seems to be somewhat contradictory, but nonetheless, the primary material here is not smooth stucco. So if required, we would ask for relief from that particular provision in the form of an exception. So if I may summarize my opinion with respect to which architectural design guidelines we are seeing exceptions from.
Before you do that, that is presuming that the guidelines apply at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under page 61 would be the permitted elements of stone brick, stucco, cast stone, wood shingle and wood, or hardy pink plank clapboard. And we are proposing vertically integrated wood and stucco here. So to the extent relief is required, we are requesting that. And then also that wood or hardy plank shall be in the pattern of clapboard, drop siding, or board and batten and shall be painted. And here we have vertically integrated wood cladding rather than a clapboard pattern. And then secondly, under building parts would be the provision relative to smooth stucco, whereas we're proposing primarily wood as the primary building material along the frontage. And then also the relief from the void solid fenestration provision, the void to solid ratio in particular, and that the building facades incorporate features including a transparent entrance and stoop, the living green wall along Ocean Avenue, and then the articulated wood fence along both of the main elevations. But we do not meet the percentages for fenestration. So under the waterfront redevelopment plan as amended last year, it clarified the standard of proof for a design exception. And it says, "In accordance with NJSA 40 subsection 55d 51, the planning board may grant design exceptions from the requirements of sections 3.6 and 3.7 and other design requirements and our principles in this plan if the planning board finds they are reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the provisions of the design requirements/principles to the extent that the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the design requirements principles is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the landing question." So that's the standard for granting an exception from these architectural design guidelines. I would offer, first of all, with respect to the wood cladding, that yes, it is a vertically integrated rather than a traditional clapboard pattern, and the primary material here is wood rather than stucco. However, this is very much in keeping with the contemporary style of the building and in my opinion meets the spirit of the architectural guidelines, which actually does allow wood and stucco, albeit in a different pattern. But the proposal here is really integral to the modernist style that the architects are employing, and we feel it's appropriate and in my opinion, it's within the general purpose and intent of the design guidelines. And it would not be practicable or frankly appropriate to go with a more traditional application of wood in such a modernist approach to this particular building form. We are also requesting relief from the exceptions regarding the solid to void ratios along the building facades, again, which are really intended for mixed-use buildings. Buildings would have active storefronts at the ground level, other residential uses that may require more fenestration, light and air, which frankly, we don't need with this particular use because really, most of the facility is open to the air without a roof. I mean, it's essentially a pool facility. So in lieu of windows, the building facades incorporate features including the transparent entrance and stoop, the green wall along Ocean Avenue, and then the articulated wood fence. And now with the additional incents along the boardwalk elevation, in my opinion, create visual interest and avoid dull blank walls, which is really the intent of those guidelines in the plan. So we feel we've made a good effort to, in light of that intent, to actually accommodate that within more of a modernist building with a use that doesn't lend itself to an active transparent storefront along Ocean Avenue or the boardwalk elevation. So in conclusion, the design of the building is within the purpose and intent of the architectural design guidelines, notwithstanding the fact that the guidelines were not specifically intended for this proposed use or building type, let alone this particular style of architecture. And so with that, unless you have anything further.
I just have some summarizing questions.
Okay.
So in your professional opinion, is this use a permitted use that meets all conditional requirements under the waterfront?
The microphone should be on now.
Is it on? There we go. In your professional opinion as a planner, does this beach club use meet all of the requirements for conditional use and is it therefore permitted by the waterfront redevelopment plan?
Yes.
In your professional opinion as a planner, does this application meet all of the bulk requirements that apply for this particular use and location?
Yes, it does.
And in your professional opinion, does this application meet all of the criteria under section 3.8.1b, the design exception standards of the waterfront redevelopment plan?
Yes.
That's all I have for Mr. Hughes.
Okay, to proceed to questions from the board.
So the change to the building facade of the Ocean Avenue side, so previously it was just like wire for the living wall, now they have these vertical wood slats with the wire as part of...
Sorry, which side?
The Ocean Avenue side, the inch and twelve.
Can we bring up the Ocean Avenue side, please?
Sure. No, just for clarification, there's no change to the facade at all. There was a request at the last meeting to show what the building as previously proposed... Oh, sorry. As there was a request to show what the building would look like before all the vines had completely grown in.
Right, we had never seen the depiction of it without the greenery.
But there's no, just...
Yeah, it's exactly the same.
It's exactly the same. It's just showing, Mr. Bauer had previously testified that it would take a period of time for the vines to grow in, and it was asked, what would the building look like before the greenery completed?
Just to clarify, so the requested relief, which you spoke to in your testimony, was submitted to the board in a revised submission, June 14, 2019, right? Everything that you testified to is consistent with that?
I believe that's the case. That was our intent this evening.
Okay.
If we miss something, let us know.
No. That was our intent. And my second question has to do with the detail of the fence on the eastern side or the boardwalk side of the building. It's a little hard to read without the fence detail, so I'm speaking to this rendering. It seems that the parts that are recessed in the planting are boards that are, that don't run fully, there are no gaps between the boards, they don't run fully to the ground. And then the parts that are extruding still on your property but towards the boardwalk have some kind of articulated height. Is that true? I just can't read it completely from the rendering. So the part all the way to the, so the south, the southernmost part, it seems like those boards are not fully separated boards, there's just some kind of like cut in them?
I can tell you that there was no intent to change those. So whatever was previously testified to is still...
In the detail?
It's the same pattern across that entire fence line.
Previously, you've just articulated, you've had it going on.
Correct. Exactly the same as Mr. Hendall had previously testified.
All right, so everything, so this view is all on your property. None of this is boardwalk?
Correct. There is nothing on the boardwalk.
So what's these, where the grasses are, is that open to the ground level or how's that planted? Is that a planter box underneath the boardwalk or is it planted in the same and the elevation?
So it'd be the same way that they're planted within the interior of the facility?
So that's all elevation, like the ground elevation is right up under the boardwalk?
That's right.
I just had a question in that southernmost pocket, why there was a decision to not do the planting there?
That's not our property.
Oh.
The property line was shown on the survey, actually Jogs.
All right, I had a question for you about, I know we had shown that on the, on this side that we did deal with the, we were talking about building articulation, and we're talking about the, on the boardwalk side was what it was like, no more than like 100 feet, and there had to be some variances within that. So what happens to the, what are the requirements on the side that fronts Ocean Avenue as opposed to the side that is towards the boardwalk? What are the requirements there?
Well, so the guideline in the plan, it basically says, "No street wall should extend beyond 100 feet without a break. This can be accomplished by articulating the building in a plan or elevations. Inches may be enough." So what we've described in the prior testimony, and it's certainly my opinion, but the way that the fence is articulated, plus the living wall, plus the fact that we have the arch opening along Ocean, we feel that those are all elements that help to break up creating an overly long uninterrupted street wall along that elevation. So we feel like those are the elements that address that guideline on Ocean Avenue, and then on the boardwalk side, it's both the fence and then the incents with the landscaping that are now proposed.
Okay, I also have a question for you about, you'd mentioned within CAFRA, and you mentioned about greater than 15 feet with the mechanicals and the bulkhead and whatnot there. So from what I can see on this rendering, I'm concerned about, obviously, we're concerned about what is viewable from North Beach coming out. So I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to get up because it's a little easier just to state it here, is that I'm concerned about, even though this is not structural, this piece right here, I see that the bulkhead comes to here, but there's something here that we've put out so that the folks from this side looking out from North Beach looking to the beach, I want to make sure that they're already obstructed by the bulkhead. I just want to make sure there's nothing else obstructing their view outside of the bulkhead. And I'm assuming that maybe that's just part of the rendering, maybe that's not your intention.
Yeah, I think...
Do you see what I mean?
I do, yes. So obviously, the majority, remember, it's just a transparent canopy that will be above that seating area.
Okay.
And the majority of it, it will be behind, right?
They can't hear us.
It will be behind the bulkhead. But to your point, is there an angle at which someone from the amenity deck may be able to see that canopy? It's possible?
It's not only the amenity deck that I'd be concerned about. It's any, if anything that comes out from North Beach going to the ocean, just, I understand the bulkhead, I understand that and that sightline, we get that. We just want to make sure that anything else is minimized from that. That's just an opinion, and I understand it's not structural.
Understood, yeah.
That's an opinion.
So, and again, there's no walls, I mean, it's transparent through there, it's just that roof canopy structure.
I understand, but a canopy, even though you mentioned it's transparent, it may not be.
Understood. And it's not 100% transparent, but it does, right? It's more of like a pergola-type fabric.
I'm just saying that that's a concern.
Understood.
Okay. All right, now, the other thing, all right, you'd mentioned about the view corridors. Can we go back to the view corridors, please? You'd mentioned something about the 50% on view corridors. Can you review what that meant? Because...
Yeah, so that's literally just...
Tell me what that means.
The paragraph at the bottom of that exhibit, actually, that's the excerpt from the waterfront redevelopment plan, which I read. And it basically says, you know, the permits, looking at this, the overall redevelopment and saying, does this comply with the CAFRA rules? And it's basically acknowledging that with the open view corridors at the avenues, 50% of the water's edge will be open to view. So that's just by virtue of the overall plan here, which is to remain those open view corridors at the end of the avenues to be open, preserved, open space. That right there is 50%.
Okay, that's a little confusing, at least to me, when you say 50% open.
Well, that's, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm just not understanding that.
I'm just reading what...
To me, it's 100%.
Right, but that was a finding that was made when the original redevelopment plan was adopted, right? So the redevelopment plan, in order to obtain a CAFRA permit, had to meet certain requirements. And in the plan, they're just acknowledging that, you know, they meet this, this plan meets the scenic resources and design requirement under CAFRA because 50% of the water's edge will be open to view.
Okay, and that's from standing on the street, 50%, standing on, you're talking about standing, street level, looking out the avenue.
Right, I think it's just, if you look at the entirety of the waterfront, you know, north to south, they're just saying by virtue of the fact of preserving open space at the end of each avenue.
Oh, that, or you're talking about the whole thing, not just the specific street corridor.
That's right.
Right, yeah, just to pick up on what Mr. Hughes said, that language was put in there because as this plan was being memorialized, there was a conversation with the DUC about how to make the urban design plan fit with the CAFRA rules, so that the general permit for the overall waterfront development, so that 50% refers to the entire waterfront. It's not 50% of the view corridor. It's understood that the pavilions were the, you know, here, and then the view corridors, pavilion, view corridor.
Okay, all right, so then, so then a view corridor, so there's possibilities for also within those view corridors that on, between ocean and the beach, that that could be, could anything be built on these at all to here? Can anything be built on these lots? Because there are things here, so can anything be built, like, you know, the splash park, like a mini golf? Is that something that can be built here, just like it is here?
I think that's actually more of a legal question.
Yeah, okay.
Some of those lots are encumbered by Green Acres and have certain restrictions that would prohibit...
Come on, move up, there's plenty of seats right here.
She has to speak up.
I understand, come on, move up, there's plenty of places to speak, for everybody. Go ahead. Is it a legal question?
It is more of a legal question than a planning question, as several of those lots are encumbered by Green Acres restrictions that would prohibit the building of certain things, although there are exceptions under the Green Acres regulations. So if you ask whether anything can be built, there are certain things that Green Acres allows to be constructed, but many things cannot be constructed, so you would have to follow the Green Acres regulations. But that is why this particular application is limited to block 123, which is a lot that is not encumbered and which is in between the view corridor lots.
Right, but that's why I tend to ask, because obviously, even though this application is for this only, everyone is concerned about things around it also, just to make sure that the views are maintained throughout, not only on this particular building that we're talking about here. That's why I just wanted to bring it up. Okay, let me see, what else we have? Are these, are these other exhibits going to be reviewed while we're here, that we were given? Were they changed? Were they...
So in response to...
L1 and L2?
Yes, L2, I don't believe has any changes to it. L1, the change was the removal of the planter boxes and the change to the fence line that Mr. Hughes testified to.
So that was L1. Were there any changes made to L2?
Oh, to remove the planter box detail, I'm sorry. There was a detail in the corner that showed what the planter boxes were going to look like, and now since there are no planter boxes, that's been removed.
And that's here?
Where that blank space used to be up in the corner, there used to be a picture showing what the planter boxes would look like.
Ah, okay.
And now there's no, there's no planter boxes, so there's no need to show it.
Okay, there's no detail. Okay, all right. Go for it.
So you said earlier that CAFRA permitted a height of 15 feet maximum in this site?
That's correct.
So if you didn't build this, you could build a building 15 feet tall across the entire, within the entire footprint?
Well, it's 15 feet from the boardwalk elevation to the top of the flat roof, so yes, starting on the boardwalk side, go up to 15 feet.
That entire site could be occupied by a 15-foot...
At, yes, that's correct.
It's permitted.
That's right.
Anybody else on the board have any, any questions?
So in your testimony, it was repeated that you're requesting these waivers if the architectural guidelines are deemed applicable. In what determination are they deemed applicable or not? Like, what's the actual formal request for the waiver?
The clarification is, we don't think that any design guideline requirements are, we don't think that the design requirements apply to this particular type of building as Mr. Hughes testified. But if the board determines that they are, then we've indicated where we believe relief is necessary.
So Jack, is it at the discretion of the board whether they're deemed applicable?
Well, we looked at Michael's report, and then the board will make its determination based on that and testimony and evidence brought in on cross whether or not they apply.
I think that the preference would be that you actually go through the formal waiver rather than determining that the architectural guidelines don't apply.
Yeah, I think, what I heard was, if I can chime in, what I think I heard, what I think I heard was that there's language in the redevelopment plan that allows for other styles other than the streamlined modern or the, you know, and that if you were to choose one of those, then the guidelines that are within this don't apply. I think at some level, some of the, some of the specific detailing that talks about things may not apply, but some of these are very generic in terms of the building articulation. That's not specific to anything, right? So that's an example. So I do think that some of these design exceptions are applicable. I do think that if you don't have windows, then the window design guidelines don't apply.
Right.
So I do agree with that, but I think some of these more generic ideas about how things relate to the rest of the lot, how they relate to the street, I think they are applicable. And I think that if you do accept the idea that this modernist building expression is appropriate, which the TRC did and the governing body did, that those exceptions would come hand in hand with, some of those exceptions would come hand in hand, but the others about facade length and things like that and fenestration, they're generic. You should consider those in the context of the application.
And that is why, as an abundance of caution, we put the testimony on, so if you do determine that they apply, then you have the testimony to then consider.
And we would know what waivers would necessarily need to be included. Great.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, a couple. You're probably going to say I'm asking the wrong person, but since this is your last witness, I'm going to ask it, and we'll go to it at the end. At the last meeting, one of your witnesses said the bicycle racks would be open to the public, and I brought up the testimony as well. public, and I brought up the testimony as far as like, well, they're on private property, so do you want to retract that or what? And I think you referred, we'll get back to you. Are you getting back to us yet?
And I will, I'll ask Mr. Keenan to answer this, uh, Mr. Hughes to answer this. Is it your understanding that the applicant has indicated that the bike racks that are currently shown out there would not be restricted, that they'd be open to the public or members or whoever came along to use them, but that if there turned out to be a shortage, we would consider then adding additional bike racks to then be restricted to members?
That's my understanding, yes.
I have no problem adding more bike racks, but the, so your bike racks on private property will be open to the public?
The, the bike racks as proposed, and as shown in this plan today, will not be restricted.
Okay. As much as the plans say they prefer stucco instead of wood and everything, uh, a small problem in the type of wood you use, and it's E-Pay, which, uh, is not environmentally friendly for many reasons, because there's been many, it's a wood from South America, which I think there's been laws passed, and I know this because when we were rebuilding the boardwalk many years ago, uh, we got our backs busted, as far as like, you can only use it if it has been like in the lakes for 100 years and retrieve it from the lakes and is certified to be friendly E-Pay, which, I mean, all the E-Pay they're selling, I mean, there's no way all this wood's from the lakes. So I mean, so to be Asbury Park environmentally friendly, why are we using a type of wood that's frowned upon by environmentalists? Besides, it's hard and it lasts forever, which is good, but there's only so much of it left in the world, and we keep on saw cutting it, uh, we have problems.
Yeah, so I'm not intimately familiar with all of the, the background which you just described. Obviously, this is, you know, on the architect's plans, have to defer to the, the applicant and the architect with respect to, you know, the choice of that material. I would simply just point out that the plan doesn't really specify exactly which type of wood you would have to use, so from a compliance standpoint, we don't have an issue, but I certainly understand, you know, that the comment that you're making, we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, as much as the plans don't specify it, testimony specified it, so.
No, correct, that is what's proposed. I'm just pointing out that it doesn't differentiate between types of, of wood from a compliance standpoint.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, you're indicating the waterfront redevelopment plan does not prohibit the use of E-Pay, is that correct?
That's correct.
But you also understand that this.
The world does.
Was right for the board.
And on that line, I think it came up before, I don't recall, but the, um, about if it's E-Pay, would it be forest stewardship certified? Forest stewardship council certified, that's what John's referring to, as an F, the FSC certification. I don't know if it was clarified whether or not, if it's E-Pay, it would be, um, the forest stewardship certified.
I, I don't think there's any requirement in the waterfront redevelopment plan that E-Pay be certified in that manner.
No, there's not, but we're asking because it's, I mean, it's something that we're trying to avoid the use of subtropical woods that aren't certified as a city, so it's just, um, it's, I don't recall whether it was ever said yea or nay on that in previous.
It wasn't.
I don't know that the architect was, was asked that question.
I don't recall either.
You're correct. But since this is your last witness, that's what we're asking now.
And I can only indicate that there's no requirement in the waterfront redevelopment plan one way or the other, so it hasn't been specified one way or the other. I do know it's been used in other projects in the city. Is that your understanding too, Mr. Hughes?
Uh, to be honest, I, I'm not familiar with the use of E-Pay in the city, so I, I think I would have to defer to the architect on that one.
Right, but we're just also giving you the heads up that that is a concern of ours, and take that under advisement.
Understood.
Just throwing it out there. Okay, uh, there's a. I'd like to make sure that, uh, that, uh, there will be some here also, as we are asking , uh, all new businesses and, uh, to have that outside. Wherever the smoking area would be, to have, uh, some sort of a cigarette butt receptacle.
Yeah, if, the comment, i- if smoking is allowed at all.
Outside.
Outside, yeah.
Outside.
Oh, I, one question, who's going to be the person that tells us about the operation?
Yeah.
Of the club, the hours, the months it's going to be in operation?
So, we, we've actually been considering that, and this is a permitted use. It's permitted by the plan, and so it's governed by any other generally applicable ordinances. So if there's an ordinance on the book in town that would restrict seasonality, which we don't think there is, but we would comply, um, any other permitted use, whatever their hours of operation would be, this could be the same. There's no, to my knowledge, there's no ordinance that would restrict the, uh, hours of operation for permitted uses. This is not a use variance.
No, I, I agree, but, uh, this is a question that I know came up before, because I think I asked it, like, the months of operation. I think before this goes forward, we're going to want that, I mean, is this going to be a, a three to four-month operation, is this going to be a 12-month operation, where all of a sudden now we have ice skating, parties, and liquor, and everything else? I think that's, I think that's going to be a concern of the board before we vote on that. We're going to need that information, because there's a big difference between a three to, excuse me, excuse me, a three to four-month operation, or a 12-month operation, so I, I, I think as much as like, it's not required, we're asking the question, we want an answer before we're going to vote on this.
Understood.
Thank you.
Um, and since we're bringing up applicable ordinances, um, so the city of Asbury Park does have an ordinance governing, um, flood damage reduction, um, and I want to make sure that anything that you're constructing is consistent with that municipal ordinance. It sets out a bunch of provisions, um, and, uh, criteria, um, that have been adopted into the revised general ordinances of the, the city of Asbury Park. And, um, I'm asking this question for a reason, because among, among the criteria are if you're building in a VE zone, um, that you've at least considered, um, alternative, the availability of alternative, uh, locations that are outside of a V-zone, and that's one of the criteria of the, uh, of the ordinance. So I would just ask if you had considered any alternative locations.
And just from a legal perspective, to answer that question, this is the location in your waterfront redevelopment plan for this use.
Mm-hmm.
It actually only identifies this location in the waterfront redevelopment plan, specifically on the development control map.
Yep.
So this, this is the location in the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Does that, um, Jack, override a municipal ordinance? Uh, the waterfront redevelopment agreement overrides any municipal ordinance having different governance?
It, it's the waterfront redevelopment plan that specifies the ordinance that adopts the plan, not the agreement, that specifies the, the location as well.
My first reaction is that the plan's going to control, uh, but without having looked at both of them and seen the background, I can't, I don't give you a definitive answer, but, uh, my first answer, my first reaction is that the plan will control.
Okay.
I'd have to talk to Michael and Jason, or Doug.
Move up, move up.
So, did you hear the question? Okay.
Excuse me.
Please.
Please, don't.
Please.
Don't do that.
I understand that, but let's keep it, let's keep it civil, please.
Civil?
Yes, please. Nobody's whispering, all right, Jack.
My first reaction is that the waterfront redevelopment plan is going to control. However, not having reviewed the plan and the background of it, and/or the ordinance, and not having spoken to both the planner, our planner, and our board engineer, I don't know the definitive answer at this point to that question.
Got it. So, but in terms of applicable ordinances, it's not, the waterfront redevelopment plan doesn't address, you know, noise and hours of oper, but still, if there's an applicable municipal ordinance, then that applies in this case, that was what the testimony was.
Yeah, yeah, the, the plan itself will address the uses, the setbacks, uh, details, architectural details, and so on. If there are applicable city ordinances that relate to hours of operation of retail, bars, anything within that area, those are in, in a policeman, police enforcement ordinances, so to speak, public safety ordinances, they will apply.
If I may just, um, reference the redevelopment plan itself, on page 68, it states, "The development controls in this redevelopment plan supersede all applicable provisions of all other Asbury Park development regulations, including zoning requirements for the prime renewal and boardwalk area."
It wouldn't override, though, like, the applications in a, in a VE zone? That's, those construction, that would, it just wouldn't.
Yeah, again, I, I'm not familiar where, again, it states development regulations, including zoning requirements, so that's, that's the language.
I have no, I have no.
You have nothing? All right, nothing from our professionals? Okay, let's go for a, a five-minute break and recess, please. Second, anyone?
I'll make a motion, uh, second. Aye.
All right, five minutes, please. All right, Arena, let's get us going.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Okay. Mr. Lieberman?
Actually, I've, I have one clarification.
Okay.
I did give that to you.
Okay.
The applicant would agree that the E-Pay that's used would be certified as responsibly harvested by the forestry stewardship council.
Thank you. Okay.
Where should I go?
Come on over, grab a chair like you always do. We always get cozy at this table.
We do, we do.
And speak into the microphone.
I will. No one has asked much of a problem with me, though, somehow, I don't know what it is. Hello, can you hear me? All right.
All right.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, uh, good evening, I've got a few questions for you. Um, I want to start with those design standards that we were talking about before. Oh, okay. Sure, I'm Stuart Lieberman, and I represent, uh, SAW. Uh, I want to start with some of the design issues. So, uh, according to my notes, and I was having a little bit of a hard time keeping up with you, but it looked like the voids to solid issue was one of the issues that you believe, if this applied, would need a, a waiver, is that, was that one of them?
Yes.
Okay, and then the building articulation issue was one, is that correct?
Well, the building articulation issue, we comply.
Okay, and then the wall finish issue?
Right.
Okay.
To the extent it speaks to stucco as a primary building material, using wood, yes.
Okay, so, as I understand it, the standard set forth, um, in the redevelopment plan is that the materials that are suggested or directed, let's just say, um, are to be used unless they're impractical or they cause an undue hardship, is that correct?
Where does it say that in the redevelopment?
I believe that was your language, did you say that?
I read the section of the waterfront redevelopment plan that sets forth the standard for design exceptions.
Okay, and what is that, what are those standards, why don't you read it for me?
You want me to read it again?
Yes.
Oh, you can read it, it's right here.
Okay, well, when you were reading, what was the language that you were reading? I know I could read, but why don't you tell me what you were reading? So, so you were reading from 3.8.1B, which is entitled Design Exceptions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it says that the planning board may grant design exceptions from the requirements of Section 3.6 and 3.7, and other design requirements, and I'm going to paraphrase, I'm going to read this whole thing, if there's a problem, you let me know, "If the planning board finds that they are reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the provisions of the design requirements principles, to the extent that the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the design requirements principles is impracticable, or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the landing question." Was that a fair paraphrase of Section B?
Yes.
Okay, so with regard to the provision concerning stucco on the wall finish, my question to you is, would the literal enforcement of that requirement, um, be impracticable?
It's impracticable insofar as that's not a primary building material that's envisioned for this type of modernist aesthetic.
It's impracticable from a design standard, in other words, it's impractical because it's inconsistent with what the, uh, sponsor, with what the applicant wants to do from a design standard, is that correct?
No, I don't think that's correct.
Well, is it, could stucco be affixed to the finish of this building from a building standpoint? Could it be done?
It's inappropriate for this particular architectural style. So, could you, can you build a building with stucco? The answer is yes.
So it is not impracticable, it could be done, isn't that correct?
No, that's incorrect. It's impracticable in light of this particular use and architectural style.
Okay, will using stucco in some manner result in undue hardship to the building or to the applicant?
I said it was impracticable.
I see.
It's not, it would not be an undue hardship, um, to build a stucco building would be an undue hardship inasmuch as, uh, the style that's trying to be, that, that is being achieved here, um, does not lend itself to that as a primary building material.
Okay, um, in terms of the issue of voids to solids, to the extent that you are requesting relief from that standard, uh, would it be impracticable for you to meet the requirements as set forth in the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
It would be, explain to me why meeting the standards is impracticable?
Well, for example, on the Ocean Avenue elevation, uh, this is a use in a building type that does not lend itself to fenestration within the facade, so would one want to have windows within cabanas slash changing areas? In my opinion, the answer is no, so in that sense, providing that level of fenestration is impracticable and not appropriate for this particular use or architectural style.
All right, would you tell the board what other options you explored to avoid seeking this waiver?
Well, that's not, we don't have to demonstrate that.
Did you, did you evaluate any other options to avoid seeking this waiver?
I did not evaluate other options, again, for the reasons that I stated, because that, implementing that particular guideline on this project, on that facade, is inappropriate.
Inappropriate, but not impractical?
No, I said it was impracticable.
Would it cause an undue hardship for you to comply with the, with that particular standard? The standard as it relates to voids to solids?
Uh, it might, but again, uh, I just testified that it was impracticable, which is one way of the standard approved.
Now, the application, uh, in your opinion, satisfies the redevelopment plan, doesn't it?
That's correct.
Um, and, and when you say, when we talk about the redevelopment plan, we mean the one that was adopted on March 15th, 2002, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now. I understand that, originally adopted on March 15th, 2002, right?
That's correct.
Okay, now, the redevelopment plan envisioned two particular beach clubs, isn't that correct?
Again, I don't, I don't remember specific language in the redevelopment plan as to the two beach clubs. Tonight I testified about the language specific to private beach clubs.
Okay.
Beach club. Beach club.
Let's mark this if we could. Well, you know what I'm going to do, we don't have to mark it, everybody knows what the redevelopment plan is, so we don't have to mark it as a, as an exhibit. But I'm going to give you the redevelopment plan in front of you, and I'm going to ask you to kindly turn to, let's see, let's see where we have it over here. All right, well, just turn to page 17, if you would, and I think you gave testimony to page 17, as a matter of fact. Okay, so if you go down to the third paragraph, it indicates that, and this is the last sentence of the third paragraph, "it indicates that a private beach club will be constructed along the boardwalk opposite Block 207 without restricting public access to the beach or to the boardwalk," right? I read that correctly, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, good. It's good to know I still have that ability. Now, the, that beach club, that beach club has to be a private beach club under this particular ordinance, right?
I don't know that it necessarily legislates whether it has to be public or private. It references a beach club in this particular location.
You'd agree with me that the words of the redevelopment ordinance state a private beach club will be constructed? You'd agree with me that that's the exact terminology that's employed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And do you have any reason to believe that the city of Asbury Park meant anything other than a private beach club when it used that specific word in that specific sentence?
I do not understand that question.
Well, you said before that you didn't know if, in fact, it had to be a private beach club in order to satisfy the requirements, and in light of the fact that the word "private" is used, I'm asking if you have any reason to believe that something other than "private" was envisioned by Asbury Park when they used that word?
Well, beach clubs are permitted conditional use in the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Do you have any reason to believe that the city envisioned any other kind of beach club for this location other than a private beach club?
The intent is pretty clearly for a private beach club in this location.
Because it says it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And my question to you is, would you explain to the board what it is about this beach club which, in your view, as a planner, satisfies the requirement that this be a private beach club?
Again, I'm not, I'm not acknowledging or taking the position that it has to be a private beach club in this location. Beach clubs are a permitted conditional use throughout the waterfront.
Well, do me a favor, if you would, and go to page 23 of the redevelopment plan. Now, on page 23, if you go to Section 3.2, that's entitled "Open Space, Recreation and Community Facilities," isn't that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And there's a section entitled "Beach and Boardwalk," do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. If you go to the last sentence on the last column of that page, and read with me, if you would, it says, "A new private beach club will be developed on the boardwalk between Sixth and Seventh Avenue in a manner that will not limit pedestrian mobility along the boardwalk." I read that correctly, didn't I?
Yes.
And, in fact, that's very much the same language that was on page 17 that you read before, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Now, let's keep reading. It also says, "A public beach club will also be developed," doesn't it?
It does.
So, as a planner, you understand that the city envisioned a distinction between a public beach club and a private beach club, didn't it?
Yes.
And this particular beach club, under this redevelopment ordinance, was intended to be private, whereas the other beach club, the second beach club between First and Second Avenue, was envisioned to be public pursuant to this municipal plan, isn't that accurate?
Yeah, per some of this descriptive language in the text, and of course elsewhere, it's simply beach clubs, which are permitted as a conditional use throughout the waterfront.
Okay. Now, before you gave me, you gave substantial testimony concerning the CAFRA permit, do you recall having done so?
Yes.
And, in fact, it's your testimony, it's your opinion, that not only will this private beach club comply with the municipal redevelopment plan, but it will also comply with the CAFRA permit, isn't that correct?
Just for clarification, Mr. Hughes did not testify as to every applicable provision of the laws governing CAFRA permits. He specifically testified to the height requirements and then later on to the view for...
So, he opened up the door, and he made reference to the CAFRA permit, and I'm going to continue through the door.
Well, I will just put on the record, he testified to two specific parts of the regulations. He's not here to testify about stormwater or other regulations.
But I've got another provision I'm going to ask him about, and it's in that very same CAFRA permit that you asked him about. So, what I'm going to show you is a document identified as the CAFRA permit, which is dated, which is dated March 26, 2004. You'd agree that that's the date, isn't that correct?
That's what it says on the paper.
Okay, and you'd agree that that's two years after the municipal plan was first adopted, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if we look at the CAFRA permit, it too makes reference to the two beach clubs. Do you have an understanding as to whether that's correct?
I think you should show me.
Do you know whether that's correct?
I know it references beach clubs, yes.
Okay, do you know that if it references two beach clubs?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I am going to show you, let me show you page 12. And if you look at page 12 of the CAFRA permit, on the first paragraph, read along with me. Page 12. Read along with me, if you would. According to the DEP CAFRA permit, it says, "In addition to the rehabilitation construction of the pavilions noted above, the applicant is also proposing the construction of two new public, two new public beach clubs. The first one will be located between Seventh and Sixth Avenue, will be limited to 15 feet, and the second will be located between Second and First Avenue. While the program has not yet had an opportunity to review plans for either of the two public beach clubs, it is expected that the second story will serve as a changing shower area with a boardwalk level to serve as commercial." Did I read it correctly?
Yes, you did.
And then if we continue into the permit, the permit describes that the beach club, which is the one that is the subject of this application, will be between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, and that's under pavilion construction on page 12, number one, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and that's the, that's one of the two public beach clubs, and that the second public beach club will be between First and Second Avenue.
That's not correct.
Well, why don't you please look at the paragraph that we read before, and it says, "The first one will be located between Seventh and Sixth Avenue, will be limited," it's right here, "will be limited to 15 feet, and the second one will be located between Second and First Avenue." I read that correctly, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
And so, the second one, the second public beach club, will be located between Second and First Avenue, isn't that correct?
Right, so the list of beach clubs, then, in the next section beginning on page 12, references number seven, a public beach club. This one, number one, is a beach club pavilion located between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. The redevelopment plan is very clear in describing it as a private beach club.
Okay, but the CAFRA permit describes the two beach clubs as public, right here in this paragraph, doesn't it?
That one specific sentence mentions two public beach clubs. In fact, there's three potential beach club sites referenced in this list here, one of which is clearly called out as a public beach club, number six, New Beach Club, Third Avenue, and then number one is Beach Club Pavilion located between Sixth and Seventh Avenues, and the redevelopment plan is crystal clear that that would be intended as a private beach club.
Right now, I'm not asking about the redevelopment plan. I'm asking about...
I'm answering the question.
No, you're telling me what you want to testify to, but just answer my questions. In the CAFRA, yes, go ahead.
The witness is here to answer the questions, but he is also, he has testified specifically to certain provisions. He's testified specifically to certain provisions of the redevelopment plan. If you are setting up the question to ask him about whether or how you think the DEP is going to review this, the planning board here doesn't have the jurisdiction to make determinations as to how the DEP is going to review and interpret its own CAFRA permit.
I understand that. The reason that I'm asking questions about the CAFRA permit is that you asked questions about the CAFRA permit, and, in fact, you asked the witness whether or not there was compliance with the CAFRA permit with regard to several specific areas. What I'm doing right now is I'm asking whether there's compliance with the CAFRA permit in an area that perhaps you don't want to talk about. So, that's all that I'm doing.
In the waterfront redevelopment plan, there are certain references to certain provisions of the CAFRA regulations.
And this is one of them. As a matter of fact, this, this permit, the waterfront, the waterfront redevelopment permit specifically makes reference to two beach clubs, but it was prepared by the municipality two years before the CAFRA permit, and it refers to them as public, whereas the CAFRA permit refers to, excuse me, it refers to them as private, whereas the CAFRA permit, which came afterwards, refers to them as public. And I just want to understand, if you understand, if it's your position, do you have a position as a planner as to whether or not this proposed, what you call, beach club complies with the CAFRA permit as it relates to the requirement that it be public?
Again, you're asking for a legal determination as to whether the CAFRA permit requires this site to be public. That is something that the DEP has the ability to weigh in on, but the planning board is here to interpret the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan specifies a certain use of this location.
Okay. So, why did you ask you questions before this very board about compliance with various other sections of that same CAFRA permit?
Because in the redevelopment plan, there are certain design criteria related to height and view corridors that are specifically referenced in the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
There have also been questions by the public, and as courtesy, we are clarifying the heights. There have been questions by the board about the heights, and we have clarified that.
Well, I think that I would like a ruling from the attorney as to whether or not...
You've already got your point across.
Okay, and I...
It's already, we can't unring a bell.
We can't unring a bell.
You've already said what you've had to say, and the board's going to consider it.
I appreciate that. I agree with everything you just said. I agree with you, thank you. Now, I also want to ask you a question about the concept of a beach club. The, the CAFRA permit and the redevelopment permit both call for a beach club, isn't that correct?
These, can you repeat the question?
Yes, I will. The, the redevelopment permit, municipal waterfront redevelopment permit, and the CAFRA permit both speak in terms of allowing for two beach clubs, isn't that correct?
The waterfront redevelopment plan, which this board has jurisdiction over, speaks to two beach clubs, not aware of.
Okay. And, and I think we can agree that there are, it just speaks to two, but in any event, is there a definition in the municipal redevelopment plan of beach club?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there a definition in the municipal land use law of the term "beach club" that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there a definition in any other Asbury Park land development ordinance of the definition of beach club?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it your opinion, as a planner, is it your professional opinion, within a reasonable degree of planning certainty, that what's proposed here is a beach club?
Yes, it's a permitted use.
Didn't ask you if it's permitted use. My question was, is it your opinion, within a reasonable degree of planning certainty, that what is proposed now before this planning board is a planning, is a beach club?
Yes, inasmuch as it's a recreational amenity for folks who want to utilize pool, changing rooms, food and beverage, and other elements in the location that was targeted for a beach club. I feel that all of those aspects of the use would fall under the general category of beach club.
Okay. Tell me what authority you're relying on to support that answer.
That's my opinion based on what's typically found in other pool and beach club type facilities.
That's where I want to get to. Have you done, first of all, you're familiar with the concept of a pool club, aren't you?
I mean, I think we're getting into a level of nomenclature that goes beyond the bounds of reasonableness, and that I think a beach club is really just intended as a catch-all term. This case is actually a little bit different than what you might find in other Jersey Shore beach club facilities, which are actually privatizing portions of the beach. This is really completely confined, a private property, contains a pool, other facilities one might expect to find at a beach club.
Well, I appreciate your concern that I may be spending too much time over just some words, but let me just lie there for a minute or two. Have you heard of, from a planning perspective, the concept of a pool club?
Of a pool club?
Yes.
I don't know that I've ever dealt with pool club as a specific use in the past, and this is something that happens all the time in planning and zoning, where you have terms being used, you know, that one town has one term that means, you know, that applies to a certain use, and another town calls it something different, but it's exactly the same thing. So, let's just assume for now that a pool club and a beach club are essentially interchangeable.
Essentially interchangeable. Have you, are you aware of any other beach clubs in New Jersey that don't have direct access to the beach?
I haven't done an extensive study of every single beach club in the state of New Jersey.
All right, have you done a partial study of other beach clubs in the state of New Jersey?
Well, it's very clear that in the waterfront redevelopment plan, when a beach club is described and targeted for this specific property, it's intended to be confined to the bounds of this private block, which this use is, and therefore complies with the redevelopment plan.
Okay.
There's no intent to have this use privatized or spill out onto the public beach. That was not the intent of the original redevelopment plan, and it's not an aspect of this proposal.
Would you look at the waterfront redevelopment plan and tell me where it says that there wasn't supposed to be egress or ingress to the, to the beach?
One of the conditional use standards is clearly that it should not impede access to the public beach, which this does not.
Would providing ingress or egress necessarily impede public access to the beach?
Again, we're not, we're not proposing any access to the beach.
I understand that.
There's a requirement for this use, and it wasn't something that was contemplated as part of the redevelopment plan, and I have to believe that it's not something that the community particularly desires.
I'm just trying to understand what it is about this structure which, in your mind, makes it qualify as a beach club, that's all I'm asking, that's all I'm trying to understand.
I answered your question.
Okay. Now... You provided some testimony about the parking issue at this beach club. Now, Asbury Park has, in this zone, a requirement that generally speaking, there'd be 1.5 spots per residential structure, isn't that correct?
Per residential unit.
Okay. And that was a departure from what ordinarily would have been two spots per residential unit, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And in this case, because of a lack of capacity, the, there was a... And in this case, because of a lack of capacity, the- there was- the reduction was allowed to 1.5%. Isn't that what the permit stated?
I think what the redevelopment plan states is the off-street parking ratio is required, this plan taking into consideration the off-street parking facilities and the access to mass transit.
Now, you testified that you don't- you did not believe, you do not believe, that onsite parking is required, and you cited a section in the waterfront redevelopment plan for support of that position. Isn't that correct?
Right, there's no parking requirement for a beach club.
Well, actually, you made reference to page 50 of that permit that's in front of you, and you specifically referred to the section that starts with "The following commercial uses are not required to provide off-street parking." Isn't that what you did? Isn't that what your testimony is?
That's correct.
Okay. And you said that in your professional planning position, that this would constitute a place of assembly, and for that reason, onsite parking isn't required. Isn't that correct?
Well, that was one of the reasons I provided.
Well, I would suggest that if you listen to the transcript, that was the only one. Do you believe that there were any other ones that you provided other than places of assembly?
I also stated that it's very clear that the redevelopment plan permits beach clubs. There's an intent to allow beach clubs within the waterfront, and had the city intended to have a parking requirement for a beach club, it would have specifically listed a beach club along with hotel under commercial uses as one of the non-residential uses that requires parking.
Okay. So you believe that by omitting any reference elsewhere, that there's an implication that the beach club doesn't require onsite parking? Is that correct?
And also that it falls under a place of assembly.
And that's what I want to talk about, because frankly, I don't find the first argument to be overly availing, but in any event, maybe the board does. But you did rely specifically on this place of assembly exception for off-street parking. My question is, are you aware of any definition for places of assembly in the waterfront redevelopment plan?
No.
Are you aware of any definitions in the municipal land use law, or generally in the Asbury Park land use ordinances, for the term places of assembly?
I am not.
Now, what then is the working definition that you employed when you determined that the term places of assembly applied to this beach club?
Well, it's somewhat of a catch-all term, in that it captures physical spaces where people congregate to- it could be to worship, it could be for recreation, it could be for entertainment, places where people congregate that are not captured within some of these other more specific commercial land use categories, where there's, you know, something like a restaurant, where there's a, you know, commercial dining operation occurring, for example.
Well, let me understand this. If you look at the balance of the uses for which off-street parking isn't required, they include exhibition pavilions, banks, office, research labs, physicians, dentists, and chiropractors, restaurants, nightclubs, bars, retail, including takeout, food, establishment services, and theme entertainment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's your position that if it didn't fall within any of these 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 enumerated uses, it would of necessity be covered by the casual places of assembly? Is that your testimony?
My testimony is that it's captured under places of assembly.
Because it wasn't captured in the other enumerated, more narrow exceptions?
Not necessarily.
Is that how you did that?
No, it's captured under places of assembly.
Is any commercial application, in your opinion, in your professional opinion as a planner, is any commercial application a place of assembly?
No.
Could you tell me what kinds of commercial applications would not be a place of assembly utilizing the definition you employed to save this operation from having to have off-street parking?
Doctor's office.
Well, that's on here. That's actually listed as the third enumerated use. Isn't that correct? So would you tell me any other commercial application using your definition that you employed that would not require off-street parking?
I think the intent of this list here is to essentially capture all of the other commercial uses that are permitted in the waterfront, but are not a hotel, essentially, which is to say that a hotel is the only non-residential use that has a parking requirement of all of the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the waterfront.
Okay. Did you study, when you reached this opinion, did you study those uses that are permitted in the zone in order for you to determine that unless there's an express carve-out, no parking was intended? Did you study that in order to reach that conclusion?
Yes.
Okay. And what uses are permitted? Can you describe what those uses are so that we can understand how they fit or compare with the uses that aren't allowed?
Are you asking Mr. Hughes to go through the entire redevelopment plan and state every permitted use? I would think the plan speaks for itself.
What I'm trying to understand, it's a very important issue, this issue of whether off-street parking is or isn't required. The witness has indicated that he has a professional opinion that the term places of assembly would apply to a beach club. I want to know what informed him of this legislative intent so that he determined what the criteria would be to determine if it applied or didn't. That's what I'm trying to get to. Because he acknowledges it's not in the zoning, it's not in the municipal land use law, it's not in the statute itself, the redevelopment plan.
I think you're simply trying to summarize Mr. Hughes' testimony about the law.
Well-
The transcript just states for itself.
Well, no, I was asking him, he indicated that he reviewed the permitted uses as part of the process of determining what places of assembly means. I want to know how that process went. Can you verbalize that process? Can you verbalize that review?
Can you restate the question, please?
Yes. You indicated that you have a working definition of the term places of assembly, such that in your professional opinion, that it, that a beach club is a place of assembly, correct?
I think my testimony was that the list of commercial uses not required to provide off-street parking on page 50 is really intended to capture all of the permitted uses, permitted non-residential uses other than hotel.
Have you- did you do an analysis of the permitted uses in that zone when you made that determination?
Yes.
Where would one find all of the permitted uses? Where in the redevelopment plan would they find them?
Under section 3.8 land use.
Okay. And where will we find all of the permitted uses?
Under section 3.8 land use.
Okay. And that's right over here? Is that correct?
Right. I think you have a copy of the redevelopment plan, so it's section 3.8 land use, page 68.
All right. Well, you have my copy. Okay. All right. I mean, you have your nice copy, and then you have my copy, so it makes it very odd, because I didn't commit this to memory. What page did you say it was?
68.
Okay. So, page 68 has principal uses, which include attached single-family homes, multifamily residences, professional medical and business office, hotels, lodging, and conference centers, indoor sports and athletic facilities. And for example, I would ask you, are indoor sports and athletic facilities included in the list of commercial uses for which off-street parking isn't required?
Well, there's a provision for auditoriums, stadiums, theaters, arenas, and places of assembly. There's also theme entertainment, and depending on the use, probably fall under one of those two categories.
And how about municipal and civic uses? Are they contained in the list of uses for which off-street parking isn't required? They certainly are principal use that's allowed.
That's correct.
And in terms of the conditional uses, are any of the conditional uses contained in the list of uses for which off-street parking isn't required?
Again, my testimony is that the list of permitted uses is not in under section 3.8. You're not going to find the identical list on page 50.
Right.
But my testimony is that all of the permitted uses that are non-residential are likely captured within this list, and if they're not, there's still an intent on the part of the city to not impose parking requirements on those. They didn't provide a requirement.
So my question to you is this, and I- this is now the question. It's your testimony that what is contained in the section of uses for which off-street parking isn't required generally mimics the commercial uses in that zone. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you- you'd agree with me that beach clubs are allowed in this zone? As a matter of fact, they're specified for two specific locations in this zone. You'd agree with me that that's a fact, isn't it?
I think I've stated on a number of occasions that beach clubs are permitted uses.
And you'd agree with me that beach clubs are not expressly written or stated in this use, in the list of uses for which off-street parking is required?
On page 50, that's correct.
No.
You do not find the word beach club on that page.
Beach club. And based on your understanding of how to read ordinances, you'd agree with me that the omission is significant, wouldn't you? The omission of that word, why doesn't that lead you to believe within your professional capacity that whereas they listed all of the other uses that are allowed, why don't you give effect from a planner's perspective to the fact that this use wasn't included in the list of applications or uses for which off-street parking isn't required? Why don't you give it that effect?
Well, there's a number of examples of other uses that are not expressly repeated under that list on page 50. To me, the most significant aspect of the parking requirements is the fact that hotel is the only non-residential use with a parking requirement. Had the city wanted to or intended to impose a parking requirement on any other commercial use, it would have provided a requirement.
Do you- do you know whether or not this beach club is going to have private memberships?
I believe the testimony is it would be a membership establishment.
And do you have an understanding that by being a membership establishment, it's a private beach club?
If that's how you define private beach club, yes, there will be private memberships to use the facility.
Do you have a problem with using that as criteria for defining it?
That may be one criteria.
Are there any others that come to your mind other than the charging of memberships?
That is received.
Okay. So would you agree with me that by charging memberships, from a planning perspective, this meets the municipal land- the municipal redevelopment permit requirements for a private beach club, but it does not meet the CAFRA permit requirements for a public beach club? Would you agree with that?
No.
Well, why don't you let your attorney speak first?
Can you restate the question?
Would you agree with me that by charging private memberships, by charging memberships, this beach club will meet the requirements of a private beach club as set forth in the municipal redevelopment ordinance plan, but will not meet the requirements for a public beach club as set forth in the CAFRA permit?
Now, my testimony to the planning board is that this facility meets the conditional use standard for a beach club in the waterfront area, and also complies with the law standards. Therefore, permitted use within the waterfront.
Okay. Now, one of the objectives of the municipal- let me actually refer you to what I'm talking about. Would you please look at page nine of the waterfront redevelopment plan, and you'll see that there are waterfront area planning principles that are established in the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
One of them requires that any proposals prevent residential diagonal line entertainment conflicts. Isn't that correct?
Where does it say that?
Right here.
Where does it say that's required?
Oh, that's a principle. You're right.
It's a waterfront area planning principle.
It's a waterfront- and you understand that principles are to be used as guidances in any proposals for this particular part of Asbury Park, isn't that correct?
They're planning guidelines.
Well, what does that mean to you?
They're planning principles. They're not- they don't have the force or effect of law, but they're an intent statement on the part of the city as to what's envisioned for the waterfront.
Okay, okay. You understand that this proposal is directly adjacent to a condominium complex that has been in Asbury Park for several years now, don't you?
Are you referring to the North Beach condominium?
I am.
Which is west of the site?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I'm familiar with it.
And you understand that this proposal doesn't have a roof? Isn't that correct? There's no ceiling, no roof?
The majority of the facility does not have a roof.
Are you going to have speakers, a speaker system, inside this pool club or beach club?
I believe there was testimony previously that the architect gave, and that you asked the architect about speakers and other related items. I don't think it's for Mr. Hughes to talk about.
Except for I am-
No, let's rule on it.
Okay.
Beyond the scope of the testimony he gave in direct, certainly. I know you have a lot of leeway in cross, but he doesn't- I think I agree with her, that this is not the witness that would know. Do you have any opinion regarding speakers? Do you know anything about these speakers?
No, I did not testify about the speakers.
I didn't- well, that wasn't what the lawyer asked you. He asked you, do you know anything about it, not did you testify.
I really think that that question is an unfair question for this witness.
Okay. Well, can I ask him if he knows whether or not they are going to employ speakers? And the reason is, is that these are planning principles.
That's a factual question. Go ahead, ask him, unless you have an objection.
I believe that testimony was already there. I don't know if Mr. Hughes has anything above and beyond what's already testified to by Mr. Hennepin.
Okay. Do you know whether or not- so let's find out. Do you know whether or not they are going to employ a speaker system inside this facility?
I believe the testimony was that there would be a speaker system.
Okay. Do you know whether or not employing the speaker system is going to create a conflict between the residential development and this entertainment facility?
All right. Anthony, you know what? I think this is- yeah, you can object. It's a simple question. All right, go ahead. She objects.
The objection is that this was already something that was brought up by Mr. Hennepin when the architect testified. We already put on the record that there is existing- we already put on the record that there is existing laws concerning noise, and that the applicant would comply with these state applicable guidelines and laws concerning noise.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you didn't say, because the reason I'm asking this question is that one of the planning principles enumerated by Asbury Park for this zone is to avoid conflicts between residential uses and entertainment facilities. And so what I'd like to know is, at what time are you going- And so what I'd like to know is, at what time are you going to stop the music?
Again...
Do you know?
Just, we already put the objection on the record that there's a state noise law that has specific timelines for when you can have sounds at particular levels.
That's right.
And that is the only guideline that this use or any other use of a parking pass should comply with with respect to sound.
Well, okay, that's your position. I'm not sure...
That's not the question.
And I'm not sure that that's true.
No, that, I don't care whether it's true or not. That's not the question that was asked. Keenan, you were asked a specific question, whether, and it has to be within your personal knowledge. Do you know the answer to that question?
I'm not aware of any proposed restrictions on when sound would be turned off in the facility.
Okay. Do you know, do you know whether or not alcohol is going to be served at the facility?
If a liquor license is obtained, they could serve alcohol.
Do you know...
That's not the question. Listen to the question.
Do you know whether or not the applicant plans to obtain a liquor license?
I'm not intimately familiar with their liquor license acquisition activities.
I didn't ask if you're intimate.
That's, that's a good answer.
I'm not familiar.
That's a sufficient answer. He's saying basically he doesn't know.
Well, he didn't, but I just want to parse it out one more. And listen, if you don't like it, I'll stop.
Okay, good.
I, I, he said, he used an expression that to me sounded like he wasn't really answering. He said, "I'm not intimately familiar." I'd like to know whether he is familiar, let's not use the word intimate, with whether the applicant plans on obtaining a liquor license. It's all I want to know.
I'm not going to testify about serving liquor or liquor license.
Does that mean you don't know?
That's, I'm, I'm, I don't know well enough to testify within my field of professional expertise about liquor.
Stop, 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 stop.
We've already put on the record previously that the applicant currently does not own a liquor license.
I know, and that, I wasn't satisfied at all with that statement. That's why I'm asking this question.
The applicant does not own a liquor license?
I...
I get what you're saying.
And if the applicant were ever to acquire a liquor license for this property or any other property in the redevelopment area, they would have to make an application to council upon a couple years.
He's answered the question.
Okay.
You don't like the answer. And I agree with you that you don't like it, but that's his answer.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. You've been very, very reasonable and fair with me. If you're, if you're suggesting that I got the answer I deserve, I'm going to stick with that. That's fine. I don't have any other questions this way this, this night. Thank you very much. Yes, you redirect, I'll hang up here if you could ask me some other questions. Go ahead.
Yeah. You're, he's open to recross if you're going to redirect. Go right ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
There any questions from the board regarding this? No? Okay. All right. Uh, judging from what time we're at, do you think we should start? All right. Um, what we're going to do is that we're going to start public questions. Once again, there's a time limit on that. Uh, we, we close our meeting at 10:00. So, uh, please only ask questions about things that were testified to today. And please provide your name and address. And please do not ask the same question in a different way again. It just will quicken up the process so that everyone can speak.
My name is Greg Dootoff at Little 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Okay.
I'd like to see the, the graphic that showed the queue from, from...
Is the microphone on? Is the microphone on? Can you just hold on a second? Can you see, is there a on-off on that? Because it, I'm, I don't know if there's a...
On the, on the microphone?
On the microphone itself. Please. Is it on there? Is there something there?
No, there is no sound.
Yes. Just hang on a second. Yes, yes. If that doesn't work, we can move on here. Actually, we probably use that microphone over there. Phillip? Nope? Okay. All right, then, what I'm going to ask is that if you could come up to the front, please, so that there's a microphone on, uh, on the table here, as well as the transcriber's microphone is there too. So if you could just come closer? Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, sure.
Sure, absolutely.
Go for it.
I just wanted to point out that I did my, my own study using simple geometry. And from the pool deck, from the recreation area.
Yeah, what's, the question is...
No, you're only allowed to ask questions.
Just a question.
There's going to come a time when you'll get a chance to make a comment.
Yeah, absolutely. Initiate, it's just a question.
This is what I did.
Thank you.
Sandra Pollack, 1501 Ocean Avenue. My question is, you talked about the 5,000 parking spaces on the waterfront.
Where are they? We're all the way parking up on 71 when we have company. We pull off our ass so they can get our parking space. And we're parking on 71. Where is the 5,000 spaces that was mentioned?
I think what I mentioned was, the waterfront redevelopment plan describes the existing on-street parking. It says 2,416 on-street parking spaces. That was part of the rationale for, um, not imposing parking requirements on commercial uses other than hotel.
2,467 is not from First to Seventh. It, it isn't. Where are, that is not 2,000 spots on Ocean Avenue.
No, it's in the, can you define where that was? That was in the waterfront?
It's the overall prime renewal area. So it's, it's essentially the waterfront redevelopment area. It's a pretty, you know, broad, broad area.
From Ocean to what? Kingsley to...
Well, from Ocean, it varies, you know, from Ocean to Burke Street towards the south, and from Ocean to Webb Street in the north. Kind of all of the existing and proposed on-street parking spaces. And that was the, the approximate amount.
Because when they charge parking by the number, there was not 2,467 spots in Asbury. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else have a question?
Good evening. My name is Ella Michelson. I'm a resident of 1501 Ocean Avenue, North Beach. The first question I had was, you made reference to the height of the bulkhead that's going to house the elevator unit. How wide across is that?
Uh, so the total area is 484 square feet. You have to bring up the plans to get the...
Because I'm, you, and, and the question was raised about this graphic before, about the, the sightline from the patio area. Uh, and if that, depending on how wide that bulkhead is and the geometry of that area, it could make a major difference. And while you're looking that up, I'll also ask a question. There was reference to different locations in the, the various plans for location of possible beach clubs, swim club, pool club, whatever it is. And I don't know whether anybody realizes this or not, but, but North Beach is the only existing residential building on Ocean Avenue that there is a proposal to build a private beach club. Issues were raised about noise, number of members. We don't know alcohol. This is a residential area of, of the area.
And your, and your question is?
My question is, has that part of it been taken into consideration at all? Or is this just a matter of, that's the spot where the old pool was in front of the old Monterey Hotel? That was a one-level pool, not a two-level, impacting the quality of life for the residents of, of North Beach? Not just noise, but visual and, and... It was a hotel. You had people coming in and people going out. Here you have people all the time. And we don't know, the, as was raised before, the hours of operation, the months of operation. There are so many unanswered questions.
That's, that's, we need questions.
That was my question.
So, so the question, can we get the reply to the height, please? Do we have the height and the width?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, and the answer to the first question?
The first question, the width of the bulkhead is 26 and a half feet.
26 and a half feet. And do you know the distance between Sixth and Seventh Avenue? And, 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 and another question that I have...
Let him answer, let him answer one question at a time before you ask the second.
Because they're related.
Okay, well, we'll get there. But let him answer the first one.
Because my, my, my question is related to this.
Okay, hang on. Let's, let's, let's get one answered before we go to the next.
So it's 248 feet.
So it's 248 feet and the bulkhead is?
26 and a half.
26, so about 10%. We have asked, as a resident of North Beach, to be able to get some kind of rendering because it's very difficult to tell and gauge from an image like this what the impact is from the varying different parts of the building.
And the question is?
The question is, can we get, can we get something that is more representative of the angles and for what is being proposed, the angles and the impact visually that that will have for Ocean Avenue and the North Beach residential area? Thank you. I'd like to get an answer as to whether we could get that. I think it would make it a lot easier for all of us to visualize this rather than in two-dimensional form like that.
Wow.
I don't... Go ahead.
We've provided 52 exhibits in the course of this hearing from various different angles, various different sides.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time.
And we provided testimony in extra.
But it's still not providing a visual that any of us can, can...
Right. The question was answered. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's...
It didn't answer whether or not a, a model could be presented to us. That was just that we've had all of these, two-dimensional.
Is it possible to do a rendering, like if you were in the building looking down at the pool?
Exactly.
At the, from the, from the, from the amenity deck?
Mr. Bauer has photos from our unit.
Please. Go ahead.
We've provided everything that's required.
No, that's sort of...
That was the question.
We did not, we are not planning to present any additional renderings.
Anybody else have a question? Please, please hold, please hold your claps or boos or whatever.
Is that something that the planning board members could request or require?
I can tell you right now that we listen to everything. We listen to every question. We listen to every concern. And we take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay? Every question that's being brought up by everyone, we look at it, we have transcripts, we, we take this very seriously. So please, if you don't get the answer that you're looking for, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are not considering it. Let me just throw that out there. Not necessarily, I, I don't know if it's going to be for this particular question, but for many others that you have brought to us, we do not take this lightly. Okay? That said...
Thank you.
Okay. No more claps, no more boos. Okay.
Okay. Lynn Poynter, Asbury Park. When you calculated the number of parking places that were available to the pool club, it was 2,000? What was that number?
16...
1667.
16.
So to be clear, I simply read text from the redevelopment plan, which referenced the, the existence of approximately 2,416 on-street spaces in the prime renewal area.
So those are, those are spaces that would be available to the pool club employees, 75 employees and 300 members?
No, so this is, it's part of the discussion of parking in the redevelopment plan, and it's looking at the redevelopment area as a whole. And it's basically saying, there's over 2,000 on-street parking spaces in the redevelopment area. The on-street parking is sufficient to serve commercial uses within the waterfront. That was the rationale for the parking requirements that were provided in the redevelopment plan.
Have you ever tried to park in Asbury Park?
Though, though, that is a real question.
That's a question.
That's... Anything else?
Most reason, grandchildren and your apartment building is five blocks away?
Okay.
From the parking place? But I have another question. Did you consider permit parking, subtracting the permit parking from the number of available spaces when you came up with the number? Because permit parking is not available to me, so it's not available to the pool club yet.
Right, again, so I didn't come up with this number, right? So I'm just reading from the waterfront redevelopment plan, the city's document, about how many on-street parking, parking spaces exist within the waterfront.
So I guess my real question is, where are these people going to park?
So there's no parking requirement or just like a restaurant?
But, I mean, you're a planner, so I'm wondering where you're planning on parking.
Right, so the, the rationale is that there will be on-street parking and potentially longer-term off-street parking facilities that would support commercial uses within the waterfront. So that would...
Do you think that's rationale?
Oh, now you're arguing.
Okay.
Okay.
You can ask questions, don't argue.
Thank you. Next question? Come on up.
Barbara Cutler, North Beach. Two questions. This wasn't specifically addressed, but I believe it's within the purview of the planner. Are lounges on the beach associated with the beach club within the plan, currently incorporated within the plan?
No.
There are going to be no lounges associated with the beach club on the beach?
This site plan application is completely confined to the private law in between the Borg Walk and Ocean Avenue.
Great. And then the other question I had was, the vine, the wall, the vine wall was addressed this evening as though it were a done deal. At the prior meeting, there were many, many objections to the vine wall with several alternatives being suggested. Is that still under consideration by the board?
Everything that has been questioned, every, every comment that has been made, every argument for or against, has still, is under consideration.
It's just that this evening, the vine was presented as a final...
When an applicant makes a site plan application, there's a design that they put forward. So he's, I think he's just speaking to the design that was put forward.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, any other comments? Please, don't be shy.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. You said, I have two questions. One, uh...
Can you, hold on one, can you pick him up on him?
I'm picking him up.
Okay.
Please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if the audience could just...
Want to use, yeah, use the mic.
Uh, two questions. One, your, your data that you just got off of a report, would up-to-date information in this report have been better? Because we do have a manager of transportation that could have given you insight into the parking situation. Would that have helped in your analysis of, of, of parking and quintessentially whether this was beneficial to the community? was beneficial to the community?
So again, just to be clear, when I cited that number of parking spaces in the waterfront, that's just what's stated in the existing waterfront redevelopment plan. I personally did not do an independent analysis of the availability of parking within the waterfront.
But I'm saying, would that have helped with up-to-date information?
No, because in this situation, there's no parking requirement for this use, just like any other commercial use aside from a hotel in the waterfront. It doesn't require parking. So it's not something that we're required to do as part of the site plan application.
Okay. So, well, this is going to be a third question. So in your opinion, and this is an opinion, if you saw a site that would beneficially hurt the community because you're bringing in so much traffic, would it affect your opinion on what this project is worthy or not to be there or not?
Well, so there was a lot of study that went into the original waterfront redevelopment plan, and as it's been amended over the years, traffic was one of the issues that was originally looked at. Parking was another one. And the plan was based on the studies.
At that time?
So the anticipated build-out, commercial spaces, the beach club, X number of residential units, was all based on extensive study of all those issues.
But do you think up-to-date information would essentially could have redesigned that thought process?
Well, we're building under that existing plan. Certainly, if there's a major amendment to this plan at some point, I think it would be worthwhile to take another look at traffic and parking and all those issues. But as of now, we're simply building under the existing permitted plan.
My second question, which is the third question. Right now, we have a mixed diversity of people in our community. Respectfully, in any of your analysis, was there any thought about the black and brown population in our community visiting this private beach club?
Well, this is a beach club that will be open to the public. Private memberships would be open to anyone to purchase presumably. So from an equity standpoint, there's nothing that's discriminatory or unfair about providing a beach club that's consistent with the plan, and that would be available to the public for membership.
Well, you know, just the insight, the cost analysis and equity deals with financial, and that's a part of what you're saying, and I think that would be wrong. But, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Next. Come on up. Come on up.
Dave Michaels in North Beach. I have questions relating to two issues, the living wall and that transparent, not transparent canopy. First of all, is the living wall elevation 20 feet? Is that's what my understanding was?
The architect provided extensive testimony, as well as the landscape architect.
Well, let me ask you it a different way. Is it higher than the structure of the pool club building? If you look at it from across the street?
No, it is not.
And why is that? If that's 20 feet, does that picture show the wall? The green wall? I can't tell.
It does.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this. Did the waterfront redevelopment specifically allow that wall?
It's not something that's either specifically described...
Because when we purchased it, North Beach...
It's not something that's specifically addressed in the waterfront redevelopment plan, but it's something that's integral to the design of this building.
And why is it integral?
Because we feel it's an amenity in terms of...
A wall is an amenity?
The living green wall is one way to basically enhance the Ocean Avenue facade of this building along with the proposed decorative fence.
I don't think too many people here agree with that statement.
Okay, there's, all right, there's a question. You may not like the answer, but what's your question?
Well, it's not a matter of liking, it's inaccurate.
Go ahead. What, do you have another question?
No. How big is this transparent, not transparent canopy? And is that allowed under the waterfront development agreement? Because it's going to block views, obviously.
It is something that was testified to by the architect at the one of the prior meetings.
And how much square footage does it take up in the time? I mean, is it going to be just one small area? Is it going to be two or three?
Before you save your time, there was actually pretty extensive testimony on the canopy and the size and the shape and location back at the May...
Okay, but I wasn't there, so...
I'm just...
It was commented on tonight. I thought I was allowed to ask about it. Is it, I mean, it wasn't in the original model we saw when we bought our residence at North Beach, and neither was a wall. We saw a model of it when we purchased. It was about this high.
Of the beach club?
Yes. We have a picture of it if you want to see it.
All right, what's the question?
I asked the question, why is it there and is it allowed under the waterfront development agreement? You brought the canopy up.
Is the canopy allowed under the waterfront development agreement?
Yes.
Why? Is it specifically addressed?
It's not specifically addressed.
So then why is it allowed? Why is the wall allowed?
Okay. Once again, you may not like the answer, but he did answer.
I'm asking more questions. I say, why? That's a question, question mark? Well, let me ask you this. Why is there a wall? The building has four walls. Why is there an extra tall wall in front of it? Just for aesthetics?
I'm not sure what you're, what are you referring to?
The living wall.
The living wall. Right, so it's integral to both the function of the building as well as the...
Why? It's just a wall. You don't use it for anything. Your building is a building and you walk into it, correct? That's a question, correct? Question mark.
Again, the architect provided extensive testimony about aesthetics and the overall use and...
All right, thank you.
Next.
Yes. Ralph Mitchley, 1501 Ocean, North Beach. How many square feet is the structure?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that. It's something that the architect testified to private use.
Is there an occupancy limit?
Every building has an occupancy limit.
What is the occupancy limit of this boat?
That was also testified to a private use.
Do you know what it is?
I don't have that at my fingertips. It's in the record.
If you were required to provide off-site parking, what formula would be applied?
There's no requirement.
That wasn't my question. If there was one that was required, for instance, the residential was 1.5 per unit. That's why I'm asking what the limit capacity of this complex is. Is it going to be one parking spot per occupant? 1.5? How many parking spaces are you expecting that the 2,467 have to accommodate for this particular use?
There's no parking requirement for this.
That wasn't my question either.
Can I just finish and answer the question?
If you would.
There's no parking requirement for this particular use. I would say from a planning perspective, one would believe that a membership beach club establishment on the waterfront would have a substantial amount of its membership drawn from the residential community, perhaps folks staying at the hotel, others maybe coming in for the weekend or a day trip. So there will be a substantial portion that will be drawing from the existing parking supply that's not necessarily found on the street.
So there will be daily memberships sold?
I didn't say that.
You said from the hotel. If they don't live there, how are they going to get?
As an example, again, I don't think the membership structure has not been finalized. I'm just saying, while we do not have a parking requirement, there are other parking facilities off-street within the waterfront that will be serving the population that will be utilizing this establishment.
If you don't live there. Question is, what is the limit of memberships that will be sold on any given day?
The membership model, the business model has not been finalized yet, and it's not something that is allowed to...
There's been no testimony, and is the limit of the capacity of this club, could be 1,000 people?
Well, there's a...
1,000 people? Is that unreasonable?
There's been prior testimony about the code-allowed occupancy of this building. How many people will actually be allowed within the facility on a membership basis is not something we testified to. It's not something that's been finalized. We're simply just trying to get through site plan approval, and there's certain business aspects of this that will be...
But that is integral as to the use of the property and how it impacts the entire environment and the city. How can you not provide testimony as to how much members, how many members are going to be in this club at any given time?
Respectfully, it's not...
At night or day?
It's not unlike other commercial facilities or uses within the waterfront, the restaurant, theater, et cetera, where there's an occupancy that's allowed by code.
No, that's totally not true, because a theater is a structure that is required by fire code to limit its occupancy. You're describing walls that have no structure.
So I'm just trying to answer your questions. I don't, do you have a question?
Yes. How many people are going to be parked at this facility on any given day? Holidays, days, weekends?
I answered your question.
No, you didn't. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So I'm Dave from, or Dave Ziegler from Fourth Avenue. I've lived in Asbury Park for about 11 years now. I guess my first question is, you spoke about a liquor license, and I'm not really talking about a liquor license, but is there anything stopping you from, since it is a private club for a BYOB from the Ocean Club or the Asbury?
I did not testify about a liquor license. There was questions asked about the liquor license. My testimony was that I'm not familiar with the background.
I'm not asking about a liquor license. Is there anything stopping people from bringing their own booze from the Asbury or the Ocean Club?
This facility will be subject to the same requirements as any other non-liquor license establishment in the city.
So it could be a BYOB, being private?
If that's what's allowed, theoretically.
So the next question I have is regarding this living wall. You know, when I go to parks generally, they put honeysuckles on the outskirts where people aren't. And I started thinking about it, and I said, what would be the reason to attract bees unless you're probably using Mother Nature as a defense mechanism, because people don't F with bees? Would you be using Mother Nature as a defense mechanism to keep people out by attracting bees?
Actually, today, I don't believe that there was any testimony about any type of planting of...
The green wall was. The living wall was testified about.
There was...
But he answered, he already answered the question.
No.
Okay. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Come on up. We have five minutes, so please. Okay.
Hello. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. In reading the redevelopment plan, you took little excerpts from certain sections. Could you go to page 63, please, to the section called "Frontages"? I think you would agree that this has a frontage on Ocean Avenue and a frontage on the boardwalk, correct?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Under "Building Frontages," Section 3, just read along with me if you like. "The frontages of new buildings shall be harmonious with the block face on both sides of its street. The existing buildings will provide the design context unless they are non-conforming or non-contributing." Would you agree that the building across the street is a conforming structure?
I would say it's an example of a Mediterranean Revival.
Okay. Was built in accordance with the plan, correct? And approved?
Yes.
Okay. Continues on to say, "Applicants are expected to provide drawn and/or photo documentation of the block faces with the frontage-proposed building drawn within its urban context." Do you have that available? Did you provide that as required, showing this building in its block context with the building across the street?
Yeah, this is a little atypical in that it's, as a pavilion, it's basically the adjacent parcels are preserved, open space.
To the north and south.
In my interpretation is this, that's right, to the north and south.
Okay. I'm referring to the building directly to the west, to the architectural style of that building. This section seems to be demanding that the building, new building, which this is, be governed by the architecture on its block face across the street. How does this green wall and blank facade address the building across the street that preexists?
Right, so as we've testified to, obviously, this is not a Mediterranean Revival style building. It is a modernist style of architecture, so it's not mimicking or conforming to the style across the street.
You consider this modernist. Wouldn't it be more accurate to say this is a green building? It's not really a modernist structure.
I don't know how you would define green building. Modernist is really pretty broad term.
Well, it's got vines growing all over it. Kind of makes it a green building.
It does have a green wall along the...
Okay. All right. So you have no, you have nothing in terms of what's required here for Section 3. Applicants are...
Well, we've provided extensive renderings, which do show some of the surrounding buildings. We've provided this aerial, which provides some of the context here. But I think the spirit of this provision of the plan is really envisioning, you know, a mixed-use build-out of the community, where if this is an infill building in the middle of a block that's already built out, this would be a relevant provision. I could see, you know, maybe in that level of analysis. We've certainly done that, but other than the one reference point across the street, I don't know that this is a terribly relevant aspect of the guidelines. For two, we consider this as one of the pavilions and it's not a typical building in the waterfront.
All right. On page 59, there's a section there that says, "Part of the plan is to encourage design that supports pedestrian activity." That's meant to mean pedestrian interaction with a building. Where is the pedestrian interaction with this building?
Well, we've been very clear about the fact that this use is not, it's not an active storefront. It's not your typical, you know, retail on the boardwalk. Nonetheless, it's something that was permitted for this particular site. We do have the arch entrance along Ocean Avenue, which I think is a nice feature, does engage the street a little bit, but this is never going to be an active storefront-type facade. And on top of that, we do think through the provision of bike racks and just the overall design efforts that have been made to, certainly the Ocean Avenue facade, I think it's not a monotonous building. It will be visually appealing.
Okay. On the boardwalk side, which typically...
Just a second, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, we've hit that hour. We will, we've hit our 10 o'clock limit. We need to get motion.
Can I resume later at another date?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. All questions will resume during our next meeting. That will be the first order of business.
Thank you.
So it's not like we're cutting off questions or...
Appreciate that.
Anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I believe that our next meeting is December 9?
Actually, I can link it back up just a moment.
Sure.
There was a suggestion for November 25.
Yes.
And I know Mr. Lieberman's experts were not available that day.
Mm-hmm.
But since it seems we're going to continue with public questioning for Mr. Hughes, I don't think it's necessary for Mr. Lieberman to actually be available that day for us to continue with public questioning of Mr. Hughes on 25th.
All right, we have another item up on the 25th, but first, let me just ask, Mr. Lieberman, are you okay with us continuing with public question on that on the 25th without you? Because you just mentioned you weren't available.
I'm concerned about you doing that because it's dealing with the plan.
Okay.
This is a different issue.
Okay.
If it was the architect with the vines, I'd be okay.
All right, we'll give you that leeway right this one time?
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I do have to note that I have an objection to that.
I understand.
That we've gone on for so long hearing now.
I understand.
That it gets spaced out, you know, sometimes the statistics...
Mm-hmm. Understand. Our next opening at this point, Arena, is what, December?
December 9.
December 9 is our next?
Hold on one second.
Go ahead.
I just want, are you sure? Didn't Michelle call you?
Our next opening, our next date, both attorneys have agreed to, is December 9.
And there's nothing else scheduled for that day?
Mr. Lieberman's office is not available for that. Correct?
I'm talking about a different subject that I know...
Oh, for the council?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's going to be Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, the 7th of what?
Something.
That's because...
What are we talking about?